Call to order the meeting of the council meeting from the city of Nelson, February the 10th, 2025. Take a minute, have a moment of prayer. Oh my God, we thank you for today, Lord, we just ask that you would be with us tonight, that you would lead, guide and direct us to make good decisions for the city. Father, we ask that you would be with our families and our servicemen, our police officers, our AMTs around our counties tonight, just be with them, protect them, Lord, and we just ask that you would, your will be done in all things. Just send them in.
I pledge allegiance and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They get a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Make it, give it a second.
Say it.
William, all favor. Yeah, thank you. Public appearance. Anybody here tonight have anything they'd like to say pertaining to our agenda? Move on to approval of the minutes for January the 6th, 2025. Any discussion? For those, we'll vote. Okay, they get a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
In ten, give it a second. Chrissy, get me off, all favor. Yes, thank you. Department reports, Ms. Brooke, if you could give us a report from the chair of the county side?
I do not have anything.
No.
Do y'all have anything for us?
It's such a spin quiet, that's not good to have.
I don't want to change something.
Right, that is all I'm saying.
Thank you, appreciate you being, I appreciate you being here. Next up is the mayor's report, I have a couple of things. Our Easter event, I want to go ahead and make sure that we settle on the date, on the 5th or the 12th. The 5th is, that's the Palm Sunday weekend, the 5th, I think we could get ahead of everything if we did that weekend and we wouldn't be anything here in like other cities, so.
12 is supposed to be.
Yes, 12, the 5th would be, there would be anything. Do you guys have a preference? Do y'all want to do the 5th, and if we have a rain out, we can come back at it on the 12th?
That's smart, I can do it.
Rainout is the 12th then. All right, next up is the property on Highway 5. I've got numerous calls, I think Kelsey's got some email on Highway 5, the property there, property did sell. The owner, the council did approve for them to clean it up and clear it out, there was a lot of dumping, a lot of drug, paraphernalia and things there. They did clean it up, they adhered to the bumpers, all the things, and they do not have plans for that property at this time. It's gonna sit for a while, but they're gonna keep it clean. So, in case anybody's wondering, and that's the property of on Highway 5 next to Laurel Lake. I was gonna ask you, do you have an update on easements for us?
I have heard nothing new.
So nothing new from, from the Irish Jones?
Unless somebody's told council anything.
Nope, I haven't heard from Laura. I know she's waiting to hear back, I think for the guy who should point at somebody, but then they would have the ability to sign her for his money. If I remember.
I'm sure Laura's saying.
That was in like maybe mid, in January.
Yeah, we're to the point now where the bid's completed and we're pushing along. They've just got some things that they can work on, come in and start, you know, but wanna make sure that we put a focus on that. And then also the easement for Ms. Ingram's place, I think we have a couple of options on the table for. You did, we have a couple of options on the table for them. Long story short, family is not sure that they want to do an easement or that they want us to do the drainage on that property or not. I did reach out to Barry and have a conversation with him and Lori, we met, we can continue doing what we've done. And then if need be, we can tie in down closer to the fire state, our fire department property, and bypass that property altogether. So, we've tried to explain that, that the, this is one of the main reasons for this project is to keep that property from flooding. We, I think the two options were, one, we would go in and upgrade the pipe and do some corrections and then we would back out, they would handle.
Maintenance.
All maintenance, correct?
Who's that?
The Ingrahams.
Seth is.
Yeah.
Yes, Seth, okay.
I'd be involved.
Okay, so that was one of them, the other one was we do nothing at all. So we can either get a temporary easement to go in and put the piping in and fit, that would be the last piece of that property, or the last piece of that, last leg of it, or we would not do anything at all. So.
When I spoke with her today, she's very concerned about the condition of her yard. So I can tell her that we put back, the same as it is or better. So I don't know if that's playing into her concern.
Okay. I did call, I had had a couple of conversations with them. The concern was is that the city would take their property, and I assured her the city would not take anybody's property. That's not what we want to do. If anything, we were, we just wanted to, to give her a hundred year plan where her yard wouldn't flood and she would have some of her yard back, because that, when they put the pipe in, they would cover her yard and she would have, it would be solid again. You know, grassed over and everything. So, that's where we are on that one. Did we put the title limit on them to?
I made a title, once I talked to her for like fifteen minutes, I said, I think the time, but I dropped off a little bit of bits too. So he, Jenny, get all the good, I told him, you know, they want the signs, so I told him maintenance and hasn't ever.
As we get updates on those two, we've got a meeting, I think the 20th of this month for a work session, so we should have some more updates about that. The other thing is, is Michael Kidd, our representative from Root Design, will be here on the 20th to go over the drawings and stuff for our master part plan. Where they are with it, they've got a couple of options for, a couple of different options for the basketball court area. So, they'll be in to do that. And any questions on any of that?
So the bids that's going out on the project, does it have anything to do with the property you was talking about?
Yeah, it covers that, yes, so that would be a change, it would be a change order, it would be removed, yes. Yeah, if that's what it comes down, I really hope it doesn't come down to that, because I'd like to, I'd like to see her property, you know, fixed, so.
So we're waiting on this before the bid packets go out?
No, it's already been bid, you guys voted and.
I was thinking it already bid.
Yeah, you already, yeah, you've already bid, we already voted, and we're just waiting on a construction date now, so.
On construction.
Yeah, well, on construction's a contractor, so Lori had.
That would have been tied up before the bid process started, maybe.
We, that this one wouldn't take long.
With ARCA phones.
Yeah, it's, they had it in the ARCA phones. It hasn't, and turning it back into the, of the money that we got from ARCA was the main reason we went ahead and bid. We got, I think they got a great price on it, so hopefully it'll, it'll move along, there's work that can be done, so.
Well, on the easements, you know, we're trying to do it nicely, to not have to come in and take people's property, freak them out with a condemnation.
Yeah, I don't want to.
It's been harder than we expected.
I think there's some confusion involved with understanding that the city won't own it, it just gives us the right to access to maintain, but we're not like owning it, we're not changing it, we're not taking it.
They should go ask Laura.
I actually was contemplating having her call you so that someone could explain it where it's not gonna come to the city.
If they could try to help, so.
Okay, I don't know.
You do, make a call tomorrow night. All right, any other questions on that? William, you look like you're brainstorming.
I was just wondering how they're gonna get to the fire, down on the fire station from there.
So they have to run, if, if we needed to, if it, if we ever have to upgrade that area, instead of going straight across, we would run a pipe from our, according to Barry, and Barry, I think he's coming in too, to just touch on some things, but we would, we would run a pipe at a diagonal rather than straight across. So her pipe would stay the same, we would run a pipe from the detention pond diagonally to, and tie in at our, at our place. We would, we're not gonna, we're gonna allow hers to flow, we're not stopping any of that, but we would add a second pipe to go across and then we could do whatever we needed to from there. If they just opt to not have us do anything. Anything else concerning those items?
Not those, where are we on the sidewalk extensions?
County is, I need a meeting with the county, we are, county was holding up for T-Swabs, T-Swabs did not pass, so that's where we are, and I can make a call to bill this week. I've had all these other projects happening, but let me make a note here for sidewalks, it just has to lift through the cracks on my end. Thank you for your money.
Yeah, just remember now.
If you want to send an email, that way they'll just copy me on it, and then I can, I'm gonna go to them and find out probably what. So I think that they were looking at using the T-Swabs funds to help fund some of that. So, but did pass. Anything else? Next up is our finance report, I'm hoping to be.
Sure. All right, we'll turn to the bank balances. Cash reserve fund, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Swabs four with Cherokee, that's a hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Swabs five is one million eighty-six thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. General fund is one million one hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and ten. The grant fund, ARCA, is sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And Pickens Swabs 2020 is one million two hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five. Revenues are currently at forty-two point two nine percent, should be fifty-eight point three or less, you're doing really good there. And expenditures are at sixty-two point fourteen percent, so that should be fifty-eight point three percent or more. So, we're three point eight four percent, to the good there. And that's really all I have.
Any questions for the session, or unanswered?
Is there anything for the work session that you'd like to see? You know, kind of talk about, so we can talk about.
Can we talk about capital improvement, who we are with it, is there anything we could pull in? You know, things that are pricing, that kind of stuff. Anybody else would like, was there anything that you guys would like to see for the work session? I'll open that up for, for you guys as well.
Maybe be thinking about projects that you wanna add to the current CIPs, we can start talking about that and wanting to.
Yeah, I'm gonna give an update on, on our current projects with where we are, and we'll do that with finances as well. So where we are with finances on current projects and stuff. Next up is unfinished business, city website renovations.
Okay, we have quotes from Online Graphics, Anthony Lawrence, McNeil, to rework our website, there's some major issues. There's a lot of links that say that it'll take you to good things, like to get to your trash count or your tax count, and it doesn't work. And the way it's currently set up, we can't allow it to connect because there isn't a firewall or something with our software. And there's just several other ongoing issues with it. So, there's another, there's a company that does it through DMA, I was gonna say like six hundred dollars a month, period, like. So maybe it is just honestly a little absurd, but with, these are both local companies.
And I do know that our website, we're in the process of getting some information, we had talked with Mary Levy about upgrading our current website.
We've been talking about it for a while.
Yeah, and she, she was swamped because we were, we were in line. So, and I think she, our last conversation, you were supposed to try to do something by the end of March.
This is how that's all.
Okay.
Online Graphics is.
Okay, so this is just for that, is this for rework at all, or just to rework this piece of it?
That's sort of like rework and move the whole website off of what it's hosted with now and to that go to the website builder, so yeah, there is, where y'all could actually do things if you wanted to. Because the way it's set up now, y'all are supposed to be a content manager, but there's no way, like I had to have custom program meeting to be able to do the way it's set up now, I mean, you can do a few things, but that way, it would be better in the long term or, you know, y'all ever want to take it from me or whatever, whatever, I think it's a better way to do. And I gave you examples, stuff like the sheriff's office, that's what they use, and then we did the elections. I mean, it is like a template thing, but it's, they professional and I, I think it's the better route to go.
So, this is what, and I'll, I'll refresh everybody, this is what we were talking about. We had signed a contract with Keith Johnson for a year.
Once comes up every year, so we're having to pay the renewals for the house.
Yeah. And he was hosting it, we were looking at ways to get off of that and get onto a different host, and that's what we were waiting on Mary for, so that's what this proposal is.
And then like everything will be under GoDaddy, y'all's own account, so you will have ownership of all of it. Like even if you wanted to cut ties with me, you know, y'all could.
When's the time for him to do?
I think it's April, third of August, and I mean, the hosting fee isn't much, you know, maybe wrong, it's not like you're spending a ton of money on it. Lawrence did text me, which I don't know if it's on here, that he did find a third party hosting. So I think it's the same one that Sheriff's Department uses, it came out like ten bucks a month or something. But it was a reputable company. And I did ask him to break his into two, because one was for some update, just the basic maintenance on it. Not only virtual quote, but that way it breaks it. We wanted one quote for the website and one quote for the house.
The renovation, the one that we have right now, and we talked about it earlier, is the complexity of it and being able to own it. You have to go into the backend, and I think you've attested that now, just to make simple changes, and that's what Mary was saying was, we asked her to look at it so she could show us how to do it, and it just was one of those things, it's just.
I'm not, I think, well, it's, I'm not touching it.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I'm a computer liter, but I don't, some of the, some of the things I saw, I don't think I've, I've got a touch here, so.
So it'll take a week or two to get going?
How long would it take you if we accepted your proposal?
I think I put in there, I mean, it might take six weeks until they convert it all the way over to the new one. Because y'all, y'all do have a bunch of pa, like twenty seven pages or something.
I talked about narrowing that down a little bit. I think there's some things that we don't, people need to up, we can update, so they've not been updated for a long time.
So it's like three thousand, thirty-five hundred, so what would like the monthly?
I think it's two hundred and one.
Yeah, so you already have a hundred and fifty to maintain it right now, so I did go up a little fifty dollars on that quote. And then, but again, the whole thing is we're moving the whole, like, all the code has to be moved to, and, but, like I said, I really suggest a website builder, or we can do a custom one, but like I personally think, just with what I've done with everything else, that it works the best, and it's really not hard for y'all to make changes if y'all needed to, you know.
Yeah.
But obviously I would like to maintain it for you, I mean.
And also Lawrence didn't send anything with his, like the background stuff, kind of a conversation, but he's done something with FACA and several other, like government typing, so he's familiar with security, having to deal with government stuff. And Chrissy could probably expand on that some more. They can just read conversations that I've done, because there's a lot of experience and stuff behind it too.
That's true.
What's your recommendation?
Can I say anything that we have now? Anything that we have now? I think both are, are both of these are good points. I will tell you this, even if we ended up not going with Lawrence McNeil's quote, I would suggest that we work with Lawrence to set our computers up and to see if he would give us a contract, like a yearly contract, something like what we give at Bosch.
Just computers, yeah.
Yeah, we, we're gonna need somebody new there, so my opinion, what it's worth. And finding somebody that will do that at the level that Lawrence could do it at, it's hard to find. You can't find people that can, you know, come in and build, to build a computer or change one completely over like what. And if you do find them, they're outrageous.
I think his maintenance was less. He's just about an hour, he said the first year he was fourteen hundred to give it, and then going forward, he, he assumed that he was less than that.
Do we currently have a monthly posting?
He's married, because she understands our website, and they're supposed to be the Chinese. So we're paying her.
Just took a junior, saying, get y'all a quote, so, sorry.
Never paid her one fifty now, if she does the, the new site, then I think it was two hundred a month back.
I mean, I can negotiate with that, I just, I'm just trying to really go up with everything, because everybody's showing up on my rates, so. But y'all don't feel pressured to do it with me, you know, as I said.
It's hard to, but she should have to recuse herself. We've always known that you can step a few shots.
Chusen would be a problem.
Wouldn't she step in to do the hose, if, if you needed another?
I'm gonna break the tie, I'm gonna break the tie, I don't have a quarter if she accuses herself.
That's true.
It's all in good faith, we have two, we have two quotes.
Because there's a different.
Huh?
Because Lawrence is Chrissy's husband.
I gotcha.
Conflict, there's an actual conflict.
There is an actual conflict.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, tricky with your people.
Start with the sweet face.
I like the, I do, I mean, Mary's done a great job for us, I don't have a problem with that. Do you have a problem with that, Chrissy? No, I don't think so. So, I would like to entertain using Lawrence to do maintenance, if he's interested though.
I, he won't maintain a website you guys have built.
No, we're not saying maintain, I'm saying maintain, like, anti-stuff, just for us, not for, not for the website, so.
Emails. I just.
Cyber security.
That he does real well, they, they have.
Well, he totally did stuff with FACA.
Same to do any website.
It's a nightmare. Boy, and I just filled out the gas switcher to the state ones, because like, they're wanting me out of.
They had to fill out, yeah, you fill out like a four hundred page document. He was telling me it's other security stuff for them, and he's like, we don't even do any of this for you.
Nothing to have to do with like the loans, like the, your kinds of stuff that.
Yes, well, you're, you have something, I mean, but they're not, they're not accessing that information, so he's like, I don't, yeah, but it's.
Does anybody have the opportunity to go out and look at the sheriff's website or anything like that? I did, so I didn't have to go out at all.
It's easy to navigate.
Yeah.
And links actually goes, you know, the elections was, the board elections was.
Yeah, that's pretty easy, but you, you did the one.
Yeah, like I said, they're, they are kind of template, you know, but they're all standard, and, I mean, you can do a lot of different things with it, but. Yeah, all those are with that website builder, because I'm really custom, like, no Pickens is custom programmed, but I just started doing this with others, and I think it's, I have control issues, but I do like this, because I think it's better for you as a client, so you can actually, like I said, if y'all needed to make changes, you could do it. And more people know how to use it as well.
I'll interject one time, you do not need to miss qualifying for the next election.
Come on now. No, we didn't know anything about that until we were talking to Stacy, she actually caught it. She called me and just said, like, if we were gonna do that, we would have had to do qualify months before, so she could get on the ballot. If we can get on her, she's contacting their attorney to see if we can act, and they knew how to do with the type of election it was.
It's the type of election. We don't, we don't have anything in the middle we can appoint a council member to.
It'd have to be in the charter.
That's right.
Charter, charter.
Talking about, as it can just put it in, actually, so I mean, it can be done, but it requires the legislature to vote on it.
But it might be something we want to think about going forward for situations like this.
I mean, you just have to get the local legislator to sponsor the legislation, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Would that be Jasper's?
Probably.
I think water might do some in the city, but I mean.
But I don't know how, maybe one question would be, if somebody wants to contact them and ask, how fast could it happen? Is that something they could, I don't know when, what the dates of the session are, is that something that could go through easily? Or do they need a lot of heads up to put that through? I would call this office and ask, because I mean, if it could happen, it could happen and then you could do it. I just don't know what the timeframes are for them to get local legislation passed. That is a big problem.
I have to put stipulations on appointments here, like if it's.
How does that work, I mean, until the next, you appoint them and they, they're up for the next election?
Yeah, they just, you appoint someone to fill out the empty term. They don't get anything other than that, it just allows you to find somebody to fill the term until it's up.
And if they wanted to continue, they would have to run in, run an election.
I think ours has something for appointment if a council member's been removed, like the Ford's decided that they're permanent, they're like, you can appoint somebody to fill in, and it was something weird, that it was, it only pertained to that specific scenario.
So if we want to vote on the rest of our divisions, tonight, we need to do something before we all get off of Keith Johnson's website, I think.
I agree, we've got an amount that has to be voted on and basically have one quote, since we have one quote, we can't act on it. We have two quotes.
Well, I think you can get the one from.
Your quote requirement.
Well, the one, like, DMA does it, but it's, it's extremely expensive.
DMA's meant, it's very expensive, yeah, we talked with them about it several times, but they're, they're a lot.
One hundred and sixty-five dollars a month, every month, it's not like a napkin.
That was last year, six, that I think, and I know it goes up every year, and that was, their website building wasn't.
Twenty-five hundred. Twenty-five, twenty.
Yeah.
If you want a new website, we got one we can vote on, so.
Yeah, but we've been, yeah, we need a new website.
I'll make a motion to accept, I want to grant this proposal.
Give it a second.
Sure, I'll second it.
All favor. Yeah, that's okay. So we've got, take one. Wait, and.
It's just weird.
That was weird.
I'm always sorry, here.
Shouldn't just walk out.
Sorry.
I mean, I had a hole, me.
Gosh, I'm waiting with the hole, accusing, it's in my head, I was like, hey, just repeat, what are we gonna do for?
Next up is a franchise agreement for ETC.
Okay, so this has been ongoing, been auditing the, the franchise stuff. ETC currently gives us a three percent franchise fee. The state fee, like, what everybody just gonna follow, is five percent. ETC has been pushing back against giving us the five percent. So, my understanding is basically they've gone through, we sent out a list of every address in the city, because I think a lot of times with franchise, companies were using like Nelson addresses, like the three oh one oh one zip code for the fees. So you also have Paul Brown, three oh one oh seven, and Jasper, three oh one four three. Because I know even when TDS, when I did this with them a couple of years ago, they had been getting some of their funds to Paul Brown. But instead of going back and trying to fix it, it was like just fix it one for one. So this is kind of like, they're bringing together five percent, but it'll end up being kind of a wash for the back stuff, which, you know, in the end, it's like, I don't, I think they can only go back two years tops, that then going forward, we'd be getting the five percent. So he's saying, it's an increase of roughly twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And then going forward, they should be using the address list.
This session, any, any questions? Discussion, any, any questions with regards to the franchise amendment for ETC?
What is the report we're changing? Is there anything changing?
Yeah, so right now it's going from, it'll be going from 3% to 5%.
Really far.
Yeah, they were given, because we have multiple zip codes. Because of Ball Ground, a lot of people have Ball Ground, like Laurel Lake, all of Laurel Lake has that 30107. So Ball Ground was receiving some of our franchise fees. But rather than they go back and chase it, we're going to, they'll go ahead and they'll give us the 5% and that'll take us from $3,700 to $62,000, which is roughly 20.
So they're going to know exactly who's sending them.
We sent, yeah. Literally drop, like, list is in the street and the address from this number to this number, if the form goes outside the city.
So, we just want to go to city, though. Thanks for that support on that council, appreciate it. Can I get a motion to approve the franchise agreement amendment for ETC?
I'll make a motion to approve.
May I, give a second?
Second.
Wait, you get all in favor? Yes, thank you. Next up is going to be the land bank, but you're at the county.
This is not a voting thing tonight. This is just discussion still. Bradley sent over, like, all of the updated stuff. And I guess the county, the VOC gave them the go-ahead to move forward. And they only, they have to have one city minimum to be in partnership with the county to form the land bank. All of the cities that attended the meetings and stuff, this is like in '23. There was a series of field trips and stuff and then everything kind of was put on hold. But this is just kind of look over it, see what you think. There's still some stuff I think the county has to approve before we come back, like for an actual, that's, and the timeline is on the email. So I think they're probably being on the front.
Before our next meeting, I would like some pros and cons. And I don't mind helping find those pros and cons for the land bank.
Yeah, I'm going to hear sales pitch.
Yeah, well, it's the same.
It's the same with the timeline, my time.
They have last year, yeah.
I mean, I think the concept is that this group of governments would be enabled, I don't know how it's funded. I mean, the agreement, the city is not required to contribute any money to it. I don't know what their funding plan is.
They may ask the cities for small amount initially, like maybe five, six, a thousand.
But you're obligated to.
Yeah, you're not.
Under the agreement, that'd just be a choice. The idea is the government gets together and buys properties that they can then use for either governmental use or for, they kind of put it for affordable housing options, I guess, with the idea that they can sell land to developers for cheaper than developers can otherwise buy. And maybe actually build affordable housing. The proposal appears to be to buy tax sale properties.
That in blighted areas. So we don't have like an area of town, especially on the Cherokee side that would work towards. But I know there's a lot of areas in Cherokee, like some trailer park areas that are just really rough, known for drugs, whatever. Stuff like that, a lot of times they'll try to push in and it would be, either that parcel itself would be redeveloped with stipulations that a certain percentage, I believe, is to be used for, like, a fair housing price, whatever. And then there's stipulations on that, there's like grants you can get for homeowners and if you stay on the property. I think the ones we did the field trip on that land, I think it was 10 years there. But they said that it probably needed to be extended longer than that. So any grant that you had would be forgiven. There were a lot of hedges to it, but it made sense if they could find an area to do it. So, and I think also the properties that are put in land bank, if it's not something that they can develop, they can sell it and take the proceeds to fund purchasing it. It'll be a property for that same type of use.
What's to stop them from abusing the land?
Well, they don't need, like, once, once it's developed, it's sold. So they don't own whatever it is anymore, the property.
I mean, they've written in this list of like policies appears to be designed to, I guess, prevent people from abusing them. I mean, from some developer coming in, getting it cheap and then making just as much money and not creating affordable housing.
Yeah, they address that, and so, yeah.
So they're trying to put strings on it, I think.
Yeah, just to make sure that the intention is what.
They're going to sell it from, sort of, mentality or.
Yeah, there are stipulations. And it's like somebody was transferred from, there was a need to be out, but it's kind of.
I don't know what the other cities.
There was things that had to be backed.
Congress, I always brings for campaign, I ask.
Like, and they actually said that they would have a lot of interest in the northern areas just to be, so.
Cheer, you're steepening the level of legislation, I'm sure it's happening somewhere.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't give a shit.
The government buying tax sales is kind of scary, I think.
It is, it's.
Definitely the government would be buying tax sale.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. They can buy tax executions, you need a, they can buy the tax liens before they even go to sale.
I think it's Pickens had one. And the property we got over here, and I think it was like 68 and 80, we merged into one parcel. That had been in their land bank and it was from a tax sale. So I don't know if they bought it at the sale or not.
Yeah, you're right, because they would buy properties at tax sale.
Because they've got a bunch of properties, I think, that they can't do much with up there. But that was in their land bank.
None of the Cherokee governments have ever done that.
So it's just, we forgot, stuff to kind of review, but we just got this here today.
I'm personally not that interested in it myself. Another issue, especially this being spread, I couldn't have Pickens tax players put any money towards Cherokee County's projects and. I've been to the meetings, some of them. Not that many could participate in that. Maybe once they get up running, you can see what they actually can do. I believe with Bradley King, he did say that Pickens County residents would benefit from it, so. Just a bit for Cherokee, I haven't seen.
And they have one in Pickens, so like if we wanted to do something like that, I'm sure we could tag in. And they wanted to speak with Bill, with Bill about it. There weren't many properties in there that were usable, so if they did it, like kind of restructured it. Because there were a lot of like parcels that you couldn't, like at the side of the mountain, you know, there, you just, you can't use it. But it would just be, I think there were some lots of like bit tree and stuff like that, but.
Were they, they purchased them or were they like given to them?
I don't know, and it could have been a taxing again.
So they have a legitimate thing?
Yeah, they do have one. It's just they don't, I think they partnered with Jasper, because you have to have one city. And then like all can go in, but it was one. So I think it would have to be revised to be functional.
It's not active, like it's there.
Yeah, I haven't seen them buy anything in the last two years at least.
Would that be the county that did that? The county with their conjunction with Jasper?
Yeah. I think he said Jasper's the one that they partnered in.
I've got a meeting with Jasper tomorrow. I'll ask and find out how that, how that went, if there was, if they had any pros or cons. Yeah, I agree. Any other discussion regarding that land bank?
Not for me.
Okay, let's move on to new business. Xerox printer, end of life.
Okay, this is, I don't know which I'll do this with. So we own or, we bought it at the end of the lease. But it is technically considered an end-of-life product because Xerox won't go over manufactured parts and equipment for it. It currently has Xerox issues, works perfectly fine. There will probably be aftermarket companies that will consider to make, continue to make the parts for it. But it's just kind of, wasn't sure which direction y'all wanted to go. So I'd asked him several questions. He said pricing, I guess, for a similar machine. That includes like you can purchase it, I think, for $10,800 or lease it for $199 a month for 63 months. But they still charge imaging fees. So you've got, the black and white is like .008 cents an image, color is .064. But I know they also have the right every year to increase, I think, 10%. But I don't have a percent we even need to do anything with right now. It's like ours, ours functions, they actually replaced the whole top of it, I think, last year. So there's no problems with it, but just kind of on your radar, something you kind of think about.
Well, we got that, what, five years ago?
We got it a long time ago.
It's when Tina Ham was here. It was before I got here. It was, it was here when I got here and I've been here all this time.
I think it was a brand new one, so it's.
But I mean, if, even though it's in their life, if it's working, then I don't see a problem.
We got a store, enough for our store.
No, we have the option to buy it or turn it back in and get a new one. When you pay maintenance, that was. So it was the lease was up, so we could either go ahead and purchase it or we could buy a new one. And it was a good machine, there was no reason not to keep it, you know?
It's like $3,000.
Yeah, it was nothing, it was to purchase it. I think this is just, this is just a heads up, we're at end of life on this printer. It's, it's out, it's out live, it's parts, they don't make, they want to make parts for them. You probably get aftermarket parts, I think, is what Kelsey just said.
I would think so, I mean, just because there's still a bunch of those and you, somebody would have to start making the parts for them, so.
It's not something, you know, this is just a heads up.
You just wouldn't have a maintenance agreement, I would assume, with the company going forward. But they're not going to have that.
See, those are the parts.
It's mainly like timer and stuff. And then right now it orders its own stuff, so you have to show the boxes and things for the printer. But it will tell you on the screen, it's like order block timer, don't replace till prompted. So you know when it's coming up, but, oh, it would just be that we have to start ordering it versus like doing it itself. Unless it continues to try to do it itself.
Any questions with regards to that? Good for now. Be thinking about it, keep in the back of your mind. If something happens, then we'll need to come back at it. Next up is going to be hazard mitigation plan. I have not reviewed that plan.
Did you have, it's just a renewal of the one we currently have and maybe expires in a few years.
That's all, no problem with the roofing net.
Okay, you did not?
So this is the printed version, which is bigger than the one.
Any questions, any discussion, questions on the plan? Can I get a motion to approve the hazard mitigation plan for Pickens side of that?
Make a motion to approve.
Negative, can I get a second?
Second.
Wait, all in favor? Next up is our executive session. Can I get a motion to, to move into executive session?
Make a motion to go to executive session for.
Property.
Property.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor?